Good morning. I want to call together the meeting of the July 22nd, 2013, meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If y'all would stand with us, please, for the invitation and the pledge. Bow your heads. My Father in Heaven, Lord, we're thankful for this day and for the many blessings that this day will bring us. We ask for your guidance and your support as we go about conducting business for our county. Be with these commissioners as we study and make those decisions that we feel are in the best interest of the county and the citizens of Rutherford County. Be with all of our citizens and touch those that need your assistance. Be with them and see them through their troubled times. We ask for a special blessing for the men and women who are serving, still serving, our nation overseas. God bless this city. God bless Rutherford County. God bless the United States of America. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Caller, O'Gale, if you would.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Craig Lynch. Pettis Reed.
Here.
Steve Sandlin. Mike Vought.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Gal. At this time, we need to approve the minutes for our June 24th meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Come in.
Have a motion to approve those minutes and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. Any items withdrawn or deferred, Doug?
No, sir, nothing withdrawn or deferred.
Very good. Going right into item number six on our agenda, submitted for site plan approval. Item A, St. Elizabeth Orthodox Church. The item number is thirteen dash three zero one zero, Phase One. New construction of approximately 5,400 square feet on 6.0 acres. Zone residential medium density located along Burnt Knob Road, St. Elizabeth Orthodox Church applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this is the St. Elizabeth Orthodox Church. It's located at the intersection of Burnt Knob Road and Stewart Creek Road. The Board of Zoning Appeals granted a special exception for this use on the property at their June 12th, 2013 meeting. You'll recall, just as kind of a refresher, that when we redid the zoning regulations, we broke community assembly uses basically into three types, which religious uses are part of, small, medium, and large, based on the occupancy of the largest area that they'll be congregating. This fell into the medium classification, therefore did require a special exception from the Board of Zoning Appeals. That meeting was had, a public hearing was held, the use was approved, so now they're coming back through with the site plan. You can see that on the sheet in front of you and also on your screen, that they do have some improvements on there, shown for a Phase Two. However, at this time, they're just looking for approval for Phase One of the development, which consists of a fellowship hall and also the parking and access areas. Number of comments that we had on the site plan, most of them have been addressed. There are a couple that are still outstanding, one being the photometric plan. They are proposing to have lighting on the property in the parking area. Part of our new regulations does require, whenever that happens, that they do have a photometric plan to make sure that there's not going to be any light spill over, excessive light spill over onto adjacent properties. Also, and I'll let Mr. Hill speak to this a little more, there is some, still some discussion going on about the detention pond in this area. I'll kind of zoom in here, let's take a better, closer look at it. This detention pond through here, but again, I'll turn this over to Mr. Hill and let him make some comments on that.
The pond that's shown there on the screen, the numbers that they submitted look okay. There's just, I've got a few questions that we're working out, the functionality of the pond as it relates to that stream that's on the back of the property. And so, it was some information that they didn't have quite enough time to complete by the meeting today, but they told me that we would get together and work that out soon. But the pond, I think, will function, but there's just a few more things that they're going to get to me to prove that. So, they said they would work with me, though.
Eric, when you look at that, are you already planning for the proposed construction for Phase Two? Because that'll alter the, you know, the impervious services for the ground?
Yeah, and the way this is laid out, there's enough room to expand and there's some, they have some depth options, too, to get more volume. So, we kind of look at that in general, but, you know, we're focusing on this section now, just, but, but we do, we take all that into account.
Eric, will this detention pond also compensate for water that runs onto this property from other properties?
No. A detention pond, and this is pretty typical across the country, you know, we require, a detention pond is sized, we look at, the engineer looks at what the property was before it was developed, if it was pasture or row crops or whatever. They look at that and they can determine through tables and equations what, roughly how much water runs off the property. Then we can look at it after the development and estimate how much water with all the asphalt and rooftops, how much is running off then. And so, you take the difference of those two numbers and whatever volume you're left with, that's the size of the pond. And so, so we don't, you know, you can't take the water that's coming on to site and make them detain that also. You know, the pond volume is just what they're creating and additional water. But it wasn't as far as, because this property has water coming on it from Burnt Knob Road, from the development across the street, and then also on Stewart Creek Road, that stream crosses. And so, they're getting a lot of on-site, off-site water going through the site, but that, those numbers, they don't get detained in the pond.
I think just for the benefit of the other planning commissioners here, you and I were in a discussion about this just before the meeting started, and it's not really apparent by looking at this plat, but just downstream from this property is a very narrow channel that moves through a neighborhood, and there are several homes that have experienced some flooding in the past from this creek, because this creek does drain such a large area. I feel like this is a perfect opportunity to try to make some sort of long-term correction or solution to these people's problems. And I understand what you're telling me, there are federal regulations that prevent us from coming in here and doing something with the creek, but I hate to see a federal regulation prevent us from doing something that's actually better. I mean, that's the intent of the regulation, is to prevent flooding, and we're getting flooding and we need to have the opportunity to go in here and do something about that. I just don't think that we're going to get another opportunity to stop that flooding that these people are experiencing. It's such a narrow channel through there and you can't really do anything about that downstream. But because this is just a solid sheet of rock and it does take on so much water from other properties, this is the perfect opportunity to do something about slowing that water down, I feel.
Well, like I said, when I meet with the engineer to go through the pond in better detail, I'll make sure they know that. And the development that Mr. Everwater is referring to downstream, I came through here in '05 and '06 and was designed by the letter of the law and all the FEMA regs and everything was fine. And then FEMA came in in '07 when they changed their maps and they raised the floodplain out there. So, you know, and it's, I think, most of the homes are still under the considered floodplain elevation, but it, you know, we require three feet above. And so, when FEMA comes in and takes a couple of those feet back from us, then it just, it makes that, our margin of error gets a lot smaller. And so, so I mean, there's, I just want to make sure everyone knew that that development we're talking about was, I mean, there was, it was designed correctly, it was just FEMA changed the rules. And Jim's right, that stream down that goes through the development has got a lot of growth and, and, you know, we're regulated by the state, just like everyone else, as far as, you know, you just can't go in and pull a bulldozer in there like you'd like to sometimes. So, it's a, and there's a lot of communities across the state and across the country that have this same issue, you know, where you'd really like to go in there and clean that stuff out, but for environmental reasons, you just can't.
We can't tamper with the stream bed at all?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
And we can't slow down the water that's coming across this property either, is what you're saying?
Well, I mean, to do that, you'd have to modify the stream channel. You know, you would have to do some type of diversion or something that would slow it down, you know?
A good portion of this water that's coming in from the stream channel, the water coming from the south, I don't think is in that stream channel until it crosses this property. Because the stream comes from the east, so if we could at least slow down this water that comes from the south before it hits that stream bed, maybe, you know, we're...
And see, that development to the south, I mean, they have detention ponds that function. We were out there over the last couple of rains, I monitored this area pretty closely, and I mean, it's functioning. I mean, it's, you know, I'm not aware of it getting over the road there. I mean, it's all being limited to, I think, an 18-inch pipe, maybe a 24-inch pipe, which is, you know, slows it down dramatically. And so, I mean, we can look at it, and that's the kind of things that the engineer, we will look at as we address this, but, but, you know, it's a, you know, at the end of the day, as far as us modifying a channel, I mean, we are hand tied. I mean, the state just will not allow us to do it.
There's no way to get a permission or a variance or anything going there, because all these old creeks now used to get cleaned out from time to time years ago because the trees now grow in. Exactly what's happening out there, is there any way to get a hardship permission or something to go in there and open some of these channels up, because they're just going to get worse?
There are some, you can apply for A-RAP permits, which are alteration permits to the state, and they allow stuff. The problem we have, like Jim said, it's solid rock out there. And so, when you disturb the dirt as it touches the rock, you know, that, getting that stuff stabilized back, you know, the timing of the year and the vegetation that you get going in there and the shade, I mean, there's just a lot of factors that go into it. And if you disturb it and you can't get it back, you end up with erosion, it just, you know, it could keep going. And so, they used to do a really good job of it, but, but if you apply for a permit to alter this section and then that section turns into a lot bigger to get everything stabilized, then there's big penalties involved.
So, when you apply for, what is it, A-RAP?
A-RAP, yes, ma'am.
When you apply for that, will you just have to apply for this particular parcel or do you have to apply for the whole stream?
It just depends. I mean, it just depends. And A-RAPS, it's Aquatic Resource Alteration Permit, they're used for, every time a developer puts a road that crosses the stream, a bridge or something like that, they're used for a lot of different things. But, but a form of that is used for what they call string bait restoration, and there's a lot of different ways to use it. And so, you could, you could apply for anything, probably.
So, if you get one for this particular parcel of land and try to, you know, manipulate it here, what are you going to do about the rest? I guess that's what I'm asking.
That's, that's the hard part for us, is, is, you know, doing...
This may not be the fix.
Right.
You know, this may make it worse, that's why I'm just...
Yeah, and at the end of the day, where do you stop? I think, you know, where do you stop? You know, Percy Priest, probably, but it's, it's a long way. And also, this is all private property, too. So, I mean, this comes into, you take one landowner and says, "No, thank you." And so, you've, you know, where do you, sometimes you don't get to choose where you stop to. And that's from doing the, our Public Works Department for managing that for nine years, I've, I've run into that a lot. You know, we, you have a good fix and good ideas and you get to a homeowner that just doesn't want to, and that's their priority, so...
Of course, talking about cleaning up the stream and all, that's down, that's down the hill from this piece of property here, from this side, that's beside this site plan we're looking at right now.
Right, right. You know, as far as this site plan goes, that, that stream runs through this development. I mean, their pond will, will capture and detain any additional runoff that they create. The water coming from the south will bypass that pond, just like it is now. I mean, I don't, this pond works correctly, downstream, they shouldn't see any increase in water. That's, that's the purpose of that pond.
And even if you could, there's a tremendous amount of water, a little bit I know about this, comes across this site, it'd be almost impossible to detain, it would be impossible, in my opinion, to detain all that water and slowly release it. And it would also be putting a tremendous hardship on this applicant to fix a pre-existing problem that they're not having anything, they don't really have a dog in that hunt.
Right, that's right. This water, this, this stream on the north side of that lot, that drains basically from the top of the hill where the rock quarry is on Burnt Knob. So, I mean, it's, and it's a pretty good ways through there, so I mean, it's a large watershed that comes through. And then all of the south side of the road, that's all of Stewart Springs Farms, PUD, all that drains through. So, there's, there's a lot of water that comes to this site.
Doug, you said this was a medium-sized structure for the community assembly. Do you know what the occupancy is going to be?
I think it's less than 200, if I remember right. The number that I recalled saying was 180. Let me see, see if it's...
Because I noticed there's only the one ingress and egress, but on the Phase Two, you're going to add a second with the Stewart's Creek.
Right, if you look right here, this is based on, they're proposing 178 seats, so, yeah, about 180.
I'm with one for now.
I mean, whenever the Phase Two comes in, if, I mean, we'll recalculate at that point, you know, if they feel...
On Phase Two, they're showing a second one being added then off Stewart Creek Road.
Oh, right, right, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, and they're also showing for Phase Two, an act, you can see there's a proposed access drive right here, right? I think that's what you're referring to.
Eric, Doug, could you recap?
Yeah.
There's a couple of things that need to be done on this site, and what are they again?
One of them was the photometric plan, which is a lighting plan, basically to make sure that there's not excessive light lead over to adjacent properties. And the other was the discussion on the drainage pond, the detention pond that they are showing on the property, still working out the details on that.
The staff is comfortable with approving this with those conditions?
Yes, sir.
Will a sign be shown on the other, on the photometric plan?
Will the, I'm sorry, will the what be shown?
A sign? I was looking for a sign.
Well, it's not required. We always ask them if there's going to be a sign to go ahead and put one on there. Now, and one of the comments that we always make on signage is that just because they show it on the site plan and the site plan's approved, doesn't mean the sign's approved, because signage has its own permit process, and the engineers are aware of that. It would be a good idea to show it on that, it really just helps us, so when they come to get, and them, when they come to get their sign permit, they don't have to go have it drawn back on the site plan to make sure it's meeting site distance and it's not getting to any easements.
And if it's lighted, I would expect it to be on the photometric plan, is it not?
It should be. Now, it's up, in a situation like this, they're allowed to do what's called indirect lighting, which means the sign itself couldn't be lit, but they could have like a spot, little spotlights on it. So, but that is still part of the, of the plan, but yes, ma'am, it should, it'd be good to show it on there, but if they don't want to have a sign even, it's not required.
I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Other discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item six B, John Phillips Site Plan, item number thirteen dash thirty nineteen, new construction of approximately 2,000 square feet on approximately 29,000 square feet, zone commercial services located at 6839 Lebanon Pike, John Phillips applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located on Lebanon Pike, Lebanon Road. It's located on the west side. This is the property that we're discussing here, this second property. This one's all existing. Basically, what the applicant's doing, they sell golf carts on this property and have for some time. They're going to, they're proposed to put up a new building on the property, as well as a small little porch area for the sales. Not a lot in the way of any significant comments, there were quite a few that we had, but there were a couple of things that are still outstanding. The first of them is the landscaping that they're showing, the proposed changes that they're making to this plan. This site's going to have to be brought up to the full requirements of the landscape ordinance, the engineer's aware of that, they're still working on that, we haven't seen that yet. It'll be a little challenging working with that, because this is all existing pavement out through here, but I think we'll be able to effectively work with them on that. The other comment that we had was, because of the size of the improvements, they're not proposing any detention or retention on site, we just need some documentation from the engineer as to why that is. I'll let Mr. Hill discuss that in more detail, but those are the only couple of items that we have outstanding on the site plan, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Eric?
The road, we don't really know why it's called Ernest Johns Road right now. In the road book, it is referred to as Arnold Road, Arnold Drive, and so, we're not, we're not certain. And the engineer hasn't said, but I also know that it's on our county GIS like that and, but the road book is what we go by, and so, at the end of the day, that's what the road's called. And so, I don't know if an old deed references that or what the case is. Because this is a site plan, it doesn't get recorded, I don't think it'll have a major, it's not going to mess up any deeds or anything with this being called Ernest Johns Road on the, on the site plan.
Addition, it's this property that we're, that we're talking about, not this one, so it's really just has frontage, it's a show next, it's the nearest cross street, but I think we can figure that out as staff and work out why that is.
Any discussion on the water issues at all, Eric?
There's, there's...
I'm very familiar with the property, it's been a little commercial area there forever.
It has.
There used to be a little restaurant either on that side or the one over, been that little house there years ago, so I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
And a second. Still open for discussion or questions. None, all those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number seven is staff reports and other business, and item A is zoning ordinance amendment. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. You'll recall at a previous meeting, I'm sorry, let me take this off the screen here. We talked about the possibility of revising some of our exterior storage regulations. At the time, I didn't have access to this map, but this is the property I was talking about at that time. This is 231 going toward Lebanon Cut Off Road. Commissioners probably be familiar with this property. This was zoned sometime back to allow for, there was a fence contractor there at one point, and then they also had permission to use it as a car sales, RV sales, that kind of thing. It's been several different things over the years. Right now, I think it's just sitting vacant, it's not being used for anything. Anyway, we were approached by someone who wanted to possibly use this property to sell exterior gazebos, Dutch barns, those kind of things. And the property is currently zoned commercial neighborhood, which does allow a variety of commercial uses, but the issues they were having had to deal with exterior storage of the materials on the property. Namely, in a commercial neighborhood zone, exterior storage is not a permitted use. However, that's kind of where the discussion started about, do we want to possibly open up our regulations to allow storage or display in the different commercial zones, or do we want to kind of lighten up the way that we do it currently? What I've provided to you, and there's a small memo on your desk, it's a front and back memo, just kind of goes through the current regulations that we have for exterior storage of goods, materials, or other property. It's not permitted in the commercial neighborhood, the rural center, or the village neighborhood zones, but it does allow it for it in the commercial services, commercial general, both industrial zones and the EAC zone, Employment Activity Center. But the storage has to be permitted to the rear of the principal building, with the exception of vehicular craft-related equipment sales, which are car sales and those kind of things. After some discussion, the planning commission did indicate they'd be willing to possibly look at revising those regulations, maybe relaxing the standards to an extent. We did some research of several communities in this area, and of course, I found that the regulations kind of vary pretty widely depending on where you're looking. But one of the things that I did see in one of the ordinances, actually, I believe it was Smyrna's ordinance that I think would be appropriate, is they actually looked at exterior display and storage as two different things entirely. So, while exterior storage is just kind of storing things on the property, not really with the intent of selling them, exterior display would probably be more akin to what the gentleman that wanted to use his property was wanting to do, just kind of displaying what he was selling on the property, similar to like what a car sales lot would do or something to that effect. So, what I would propose is that we add some definitions to the zoning, and you can see those there. One's exterior display, which would be the placement of goods, materials, or other property for sale outside of a building or structure, and then also a separate item for exterior storage, which would be the placement of goods, materials, or other property outside of a building or structure for the purposes of storing the materials or equipment for future use, but not for future sale. I think by doing that, that'll help kind of make a distinction between someone that's just storing things outside for the sake of storing them and those that are actually having their wares displayed for sale. Staff would feel comfortable opening up exterior display to some of the other zones, commercial neighborhood included, but however, I still think we should leave the, just the exterior storage the way it currently is, you know, in the zones it's permitted and then behind the principal structure. But before we got any further with this and started drafting any specific amendments, I wanted to run this by you and see what you all thought, any guidance that you all might have, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What about when you've got awkward layouts like this one, where the storage would almost necessarily need to be to the side as opposed to the rear?
Well, I think that depending on how you word it, you don't necessarily have to limit it behind the principal structure. I mean, I think you come up with some regulations that do say, "We're going to have display, but we're going to limit it to certain areas." Depending on how you draw it up, though, I think you could do it in such a way that even for sites like this, where it's a little more challenging, that you wouldn't have to worry about any kind of like a variance issue or anything like that before the Board of Zoning Appeals. It's just a matter of how it's worded. But that's a good, very good question.
Would a automobile lot, car sales be allowed in neighborhood commercial like it is now?
I don't believe so.
Because I don't see much difference in a car being out there for sale on a gazebo or a Dutch barn, they're both on display, you know, they're both, it's not like you've got boxes or pallets or something out there to process later or something like that, or...
Vehicular sales, like car lots and everything, are not permitted until you get to the commercial general, not in a commercial neighborhood or commercial services, but they are...
Like I said earlier, this has been a car lot at one point in time.
At one point it was, yes.
Amongst some of the 10,000 uses I can remember in my lifetime.
And I think...
But it's real yard sale at one time, but...
And I think, too, with our new zoning structure, I have more of a comfort level of doing something like this, because there are certain uses, like if you look at this right now and say, "Well, I don't know if this would be a good spot for a car lot," well, those current zoning wouldn't allow it anyway. They'd have to have the property rezoned. So, you would never have to worry about cars being stored outside for display, because car lots aren't even permitted in that district to begin with, so...
But I like the staff's idea personally, to allow that there. They've got to do something with that property, they've been searching for a true use for it for decades now. I'd like to see it get settled and somebody be able to make enough money to clean it up and make it look nice, things like that.
Okay, well, if, I mean, that's the consensus, what staff will do, will draft up some regulations, and I mean, I'll leave it up to you. If you'd like to see the regulations before they go to public hearing, we can bring them up at the next meeting, or if you want, we can just go ahead and draft up regulations and have a public hearing on them in August. It's up to you, however you'd like to, as to proceed.
Will the display zones be confined within a certain area on each parcel, will they be identified?
One of the regulations we looked at, I think it was Murphy's Burrows, actually says that the exterior display areas need to be identified on the site plan. Now, for something like this where there really is no site plan, I mean, I guess they could just kind of tell us where they're going to do it on the property, but if you'd like that to be part of the regulations, we can certainly add that in.
I'm not sure. Y'all talk to it and say what you think, but, you know, that comes to mind.
I think, I think what's, maybe, in lieu of that, maybe just identifying in the regulations, you know, it can only be so close to the front property line. I mean, obviously, if there's landscaping requirements and those kind of things, buffer yards, you don't want the display being in the buffer yard area. So, I think if you just give them like a, for lack of a better word, a building envelope, you know, similar to a building envelope, maybe a storage envelope or something like that.
That may be, well, may be adequate, but I just thought staff ought to think about...
No, that's, again, a good, very good thought.
Want staff to bring it back or just make the recommendation, have a public hearing in August? What do you feel comfortable with?
Could we fit it in the same night as a public hearing on the subdivision regulations?
We could.
That would kill two birds with one stone, one last, but...
Is that okay with everyone?
That should be fine. We have an extra week in there, so we should be able to take care of that.
I have to ask if, I like where you're going with this, but I have to ask if it's going to be too general or are we covered? Is there going to be the fellow that comes in and says, "These old reclaimed doors from construction sites or concrete block and reclaimed lumber, that is on display for sale or concrete block and reclaimed lumber, that is on display for sale rather than for storage? I mean, are we covered so that we can?
We can word the regulations where we try to be covered in those situations, yeah. Because I mean, even I, I thought about that too. If somebody says, well, I'm storing it on here while I'm planning on selling it, you know, it's display. Yeah, right. Yeah, I think in the way we word the definition in the, in the, in the regulation, I think we can, I don't think you can ever word a regulation where you can just never get around it, period, or never find a loophole, but I think we can try to tighten it up, that that becomes less of an issue.
Good question.
Okay. Thank you. Just, just one other item real quick and just a suggestion as well. But the, that one, the one item, you'll notice the, speaking of the subdivision regulations, you'll see the draft, the updated draft on your desk, that's your copy to take with you. So if you haven't already printed one out or received an updated copy, just wanted to make sure you knew about that. Also, I know we are on the docket for an executive session with our county attorney. But before we did that, I think Mr. Hill had a few items to discuss, nothing that should take just a few minutes. But he had some, some issues he wanted to discuss with the planning commission before we get into that. If you guys would be acceptable to that.
Eric, before you start, this is going to a public hearing quickly, right, the next meeting?
Yes, yes, sir, yes, yes, thank you. Yeah, the public hearing for the subdivision regulations is August the 12th, which is at six o'clock over in the courthouse.
A couple of things I just want to kind of go through with you guys and get some input and maybe a little guidance on. First of all, I want to introduce our new stormwater engineer, Ms. Katie P. Sitting, is that Mr. Brooks back there? And Katie came on with us first of July, is doing a good job. And so we've had a lot of turnover up here, so, so we're all learning. And in that process, I want to talk to you guys about bonds real quickly. And a few things that we've kind of done in the past and as I've tried to kind of reevaluate a lot of the things we've been doing and while we're doing them. And I've got a few thoughts and suggestions and questions for you guys. Brief overview of bonds, you know, our office, the engineering office, we, we monitor the bonds. And a bond comes in, when it typically, when a development, they will get a final plat recorded. And they will have so much of their infrastructure built. And that could vary from subdivision to subdivision. But when they decide that they want to sell lots, we require that they get a bond. They put up some type of surety for an amount that we quantify that says that, okay, you can build lots, but to ensure that you're going to finish your roads and finish your ditches and cover all that stuff and you're not going to run away to Mexico and leave these people hanging, we're going to make you put up money and we monitor that. As you know, for, for years, we've always, monthly, we do a, you know, bond extensions here at the planning commission. That's a little confusing to some developers because the actual bond extension that comes to the planning commission has nothing to do with their surety. And we've had some, with some confusion with that in the past because you guys extend it for a year to allow them, you know, to keep that bond going. But in the meantime, you know, we've called several bonds over the last couple of years due to, you know, bankruptcy or different factors. And you know, if the expiration date is tomorrow and we don't have a bond in place, you know, we, we're going to call that bond. I mean, it's, we're, we're going, so we're going by the expiration date to try to, you know, to protect the county, protect the people that live in these subdivisions. Currently, for example, let's say that we, we have a bond that expires this Friday. And currently, we've been pretty nice and lenient, I guess you would say. And a lot of times that bond will come in at two o'clock on Friday. Well, the way that bond works, for the most part, is if they do not refresh that bond and get us a new bond, then at the close of business on that expiration day, if we haven't called it, we missed out. And so that means that that last week of, of bonds, if they expire on Friday, that means that our office is drafting typically all the paperwork to call that bond, which takes a while to do. And have it, we have it ready just in case. And at two o'clock on Friday, it's like, okay, you know, we're telling them on the phone, we're, I'm going to call your bond if you don't have it here by, you know, oh, we'll have it there, we'll have it there. So we're, we're doing all this paperwork and kind of preparing. And then two o'clock, they'll come bring the bond in. And so it's like, okay. What concerns me is what if I have a flat tire on the way to the bank, is what concerns me. I don't like cutting it that close. In the, in the future, it's not going to be as much of an issue with our new regs and the way we've done some things, but we still have a handful of bonds out there that, that concerns me. And I don't, I don't want to be, you know, I'm in pretty good shape, but I don't know if I could run all the way to Franklin to get that thing there by five o'clock. So, so I think to, to be fair to everyone, I think the, the new policy that I'm looking at is maybe doing a seven day out, seven days from the expiration date. And we let developers and lenders know well in advance, you know. Yes, the expiration date may be this Friday, we're, we're calling the bond if we don't have it by, by last Friday. That gives you room for, you know, it's in the mail or, you know, and there's still a day or two wiggle room in there that gives us time to draft the paperwork. And I think in the future, I think it, it gives me a little bit more comfort. I'm terrified of these bonds and I do not want a bond to lapse. And I don't want our office to have any responsibility for, for the county losing out on a surety because of, you know, a paperwork issue or a timing thing. So, so over the next couple of months, we're going to notify lenders that we have sureties with and developers, make sure they know, you know, okay, and we notify 60 days out, you know. Here's your expiration day, where, you know, we, we try to do as much as possible to make sure they know what's going on. But, but I just wanted you guys to know that we're kind of looking at a seven day out policy. So if you hear any discussion on that, that's what that is. And it's just to, to protect all of us. That being said, like I said, we go through with our, you know, bond extensions that come to you every month. Well, for the last couple of months, I've been putting that list together and I've been seeing that not all subdivisions are getting on that list. And reason being is a lot of our bonds, we require now that they have what we call an auto renew clause. And so instead of having that really hard and fast expiration date that you either, you get it or you don't, there's a clause in a lot of the bonds that says that they, they auto renew. And if, if they're not going to renew, then they have to notify the county and there's some clauses in there. And I've actually been working with Josh and we're, we're drafting some new language that's, that's going to make that clearer and protect us. And in the future, our, our new regs will have a performance agreement, which we've, we've actually called a bond a couple of years ago that the bond company finally came back and said, you know what? We just don't think we're going to pay it, just sue us. And so here we are, I mean, we, we did everything right and called everything and they're still not going to pay it. And so we, we've been, had some legal guidance that told us we need to do a little bit more than a bond. So with our new regs, we're going to have performance agreements, which the lender and the developer will sign, which will, will protect us even more, which if the bond company says, no, we're not going to pay it and then we've got their signature, it should be a pretty quick court case. And so Metro, some other, some other communities do that. And so, so we're getting there, we're getting there. But in the meantime, I guess my question for you guys, for the next, hopefully, couple of months until we get our new sub regs passed, do you want to continue to see the, the bond extension come through you guys? The, the developers that are doing that are paying a $50 fee for, to apply for application. I mean, if, if you would like, I could put every bond, let's, for example, next for the August meeting, every bond that expires in, in August or September, I mean, I could bring all those through and just kind of cut out the, the developer side of it from them having to, because all they're doing is coming up here and asking for a typically an auto renew bond already to be extended through you guys. So I just kind of wanted some direction on, on how you guys wanted to look at that. That being said, in the future, what I would like to propose, once we get to, because the new regs don't require them to come back to the planning commission for, for approval. I would like to do a quarterly report to you guys. Every active subdivision we have in the county, subdivision name, date of approval, status, you know, whether there's the first layer of asphalt down, no asphalt, how many homes are built, when their bond, you know, what type of surety, anything you guys want to see. But kind of give a whole list, because I, I think in the past that we've kind of give you a, you get that window look every time their bond comes up, the ones that, that are coming to you guys for approval. But as far as quarterly, you guys would have a better idea of, of what's not built out, what's still available and things like that. So with, with that being said, I guess my question to you guys is, you know, do you want to still see these monthly approvals, extensions through you guys for the next couple of months? Or would you just like for us to go ahead and start working on our quarterly reports?
Both.
Okay.
For the next couple of months until the new subdivision regs, let's not change anything.
Okay.
Let's bring them on just the way they have been. And then after the new subdivision regulations are adopted and passed, the, the staff recommendations probably would be something that I think, I would like looking at that quarterly report anyway, it just gives us good information. But both, go ahead and continue to work on them, but bring those extensions to us until the subdivision regulations go into effect.
Okay.
Is that, is that okay with everyone?
I always wondered why we even deal with bond extensions. In my opinion, the ones we need to see are the ones that are a problem. The ones that we're ready to, ready to call, but, and, and it's not in our best case to want to call.
Right.
A bond, if we don't want to call a bond unless.
Right.
We're at the end of our rope, you know, and, and it's firstly, we're just spending sometimes a few seconds, sometimes several minutes, which that's okay, but. And a developer has to come up and be representative, we're supposed to be and stuff. Hey, it's $50, no, it's not the end of the world, but it's $50 and stuff. And I've always wondered, you know, there ought to be a better mechanism. And I guess the new subdivision regs can take care of that, but wouldn't have to be dragging those people up here and doing all that for something that's just basically paperwork. But if one of them gets to be a problem, and it needs to be discussed, but until then, I'm not that concerned about it. But I, I do like the idea of a report quarterly of what we've got going on.
I do too. The, the deal is if these things are adopted, if our new regulations are adopted in August, they're probably going to affect September 1st, something like that.
Okay.
Well, I mean, you can certainly put an effective date on it. I mean, without an effective date, they would take effect the next day. But I mean, with the zoning, you remember what we did, we, when the county commission approved it, it was in November and we made it effective January 1st, so that's, that is an option.
But if your intent is September 1st or the next day?
I guess I hadn't really thought about it, I just assumed the next day. But if you want to make it September 1st, that's perfectly acceptable to us too.
They don't have to go to the county commission?
No, no, that wouldn't. And actually, it might not be a bad idea to do that, just to get what's in the pipe, because we'll already have an agenda, we already have our, our daytime agenda deadline by that point. So I, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay. Along those lines, I'd like to propose a little training for you guys that you guys could use for your hours after the new regs, if approved. Engineering would like to kind of do a flow chart, if you will, of, of with the new regs, what business is going to look like to do a subdivision in Rutherford County, starting at the beginning. Preliminary meetings, plans, going all the way through to acceptance by the road board. One, I think it would be a valuable exercise for, for engineering staff to, right out of the gate, okay, let's get all this, let's try to get all this on paper. What, what are our new changes, what's our new system look like? And, and after talking about that, we thought that maybe something, if you guys would like that, that we could, we could do, you know, in the first month or two of the new regs and show you guys kind of what, what the whole project, get into describing a little bit of those performance agreements, maintenance agreements, what and when those are required.
I think that's a great idea. Could you have it ready by the 26th, August the 26th?
Yeah, I think so, yeah, we could do that.
I think so.
Okay.
We'll, we'll plan on that. That's a morning meeting, August the 26th. So we'll have a training session at that time.
All right.
If you can have it ready, if you can't, need more time, Eric, just say something.
Okay, I think we do that. And I've got one more thing and I'll be done. I promise. I won't always talk, I won't always talk this much, I promise. First month, Will, just give me one month, you know? Just to follow up on some conversation we had a couple, I guess, last month regarding our new policies on road inspection, inspection, monitoring, that things. We have, working with Mr. Greg Brooks and we have changing how we look at some things. And we're still, we, we don't have a definite plan yet, but we've met with some third-party testing people. We have actually done some asphalt test on site. And so you talk about turning some heads when you walk out there with a bucket and start grabbing asphalt. And the first time they've ever seen that in Rutherford County, they, people are noticing. So, so we, we are, we're trying and we're, we're starting to evaluate the process and looking at how we inspect. And part of that is our chief road inspector has had an injury and has been out for three weeks and will be out for probably six more weeks. And so, so it's a good way to look at things when I turned in and inspected real fast. So, so, so we're evaluating and trying and, and we're, Mr. Brooks has a vast knowledge of asphalt. And so he has been very helpful in this. And then we've, like I said, we're working with some, some third-party technical people to try to figure out what, what our best plan is in the future. So we're working on that and hopefully, maybe even by our training, we'll, we'll have a little bit more about our, our new process and how it's going to be better. Thank you.
Eric?
Yes, that's it, I promise.
I like the idea of the quarterly report, I think that'll be a big benefit to everyone.
Can I, can I ask one question, Eric?
You sure can, Mike.
Back on your surety discussion, which I think is a smart idea. You're, you're really comfortable with the current wording in the subdivision, the draft of the subdivision regulation, Article 4, that talks about the 110% and you're all good with?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, we, we.
There's nothing you'd like to add or change?
I wrote it.
Okay, perfect. Just want to make sure you had finalized on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, appreciate that. And Greg, also thank you for all the work that you've done and participation over the last couple of months too. Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Next thing on our agenda is an executive session. For those of you that remember, we will enter an executive session, which is covered by attorney-client privilege and only the planning commission members will be in attendance with our attorney. And it's to discuss a lawsuit with C RCK Ventures. And we will recess and go into executive session. And then we will reconvene after the executive session for any discussion that may be needed. So at this time, if all the cameras will be turned off and everyone will exit and the doors will be closed and we'll go into an executive session. At this time, I'd like to call the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission back to order. As most of you know, we've been in an executive session with our county attorney, Josh McQuarrie. And just for a brief explanation, I'd like for Josh to explain what we've been through.
All right, we've just come out of an executive session, which is permitted by state law to allow a discussion of an ongoing litigation by a public body with the attorney that's involved in the case. It gave you an opportunity to ask me questions and for me to share information with you about the status of the case and some ongoing settlement discussions related to the case. We specifically have talked about the case styled RCK Joint Ventures et al. versus Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission et al. And that's Chancery Court Case Number 12 CV 548, which is also, portion of which is now on appeal. We had the opportunity for me to bring you current on the various things that have gone on since the last executive session, which was in February of this year. To the extent that this body wants to take any action based on the discussion that I had with you during the executive session, this would be an appropriate time to do that.
Thank you. Just to remind everyone that there was discussion, but no deliberations, no decisions were made. And at this time, as I said, we're back in session and we're ready for further discussion or motions.
Based on the information we gathered during the executive session, I'll make a motion to move forward with a settlement with RCK Joint Ventures and others on the lawsuit for a settlement of $22,500 contingent upon sufficient funding being available and the appropriate release being prepared and signed off by county attorney.
One second.
We have a, a motion and, and a second. Any further discussion or comments?
I just want to give public accolades to the county attorney's office for excellent work in this. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
No other discussion, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Anything else, Doug?
No, sir, just a reminder about the subdivision regulations, public hearing at our August 12th meeting, six o'clock over in the courthouse. Besides that, I have nothing further.
That will be our next meeting, as Doug just said, Monday, August the 12th, 6:00 p.m. over at the store courthouse. And well, at, at that meeting, well, one of the agenda items will be a public hearing on our updated subdivision regulations. And we can either move that night or make further adjustments and bring it back at some other time. So be prepared for that public hearing. And if, if all goes well, we can make decisions. be prepared for that public hearing, and if, if all goes well, we can make decisions on our subdivision regulations as early as that meeting, or if we want to make adjustments, we can come back at a later time.
I have one question for Doug. Did you get any feedback from any of the other county commissioners? I know you gave them a copy of it.
No, ma'am, I have not.
Doug, have you gotten much feedback from the public on this? Have you had many calls?
No, sir, I haven't.
Probably due to some of the forums that we've gone through this year, and all of those work sessions that we've gone through, and it's been very public, and we've sought a lot of input, and got a lot of input.
I mean, really, the only comments I've received have been the same ones you've heard at the, the meeting regarding the, of course, the, the issues with the sprinklers, we know is, is still kind of an issue out there. And I know we've made a lot of changes to that, as far as how we're applying it, but that was really the big, out of all the issues that we were dealing with, that one probably had the most comments out of any of them.
And due to circumstances, sometimes that work out to our benefit, that meeting is three weeks away, so we've got a little bit of a week off here, an extra week off before that meeting. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to mention one thing. If you remember, just several weeks ago, we made some, or we had Beatty Farms to come before us, asking to request zoning changes for property to be brought to agricultural zoning. Well, just Saturday night, Brandon Witt, who farms Beatty Farms, was selected as Tennessee's Outstanding Young Farmer. And because of that, he brought a whole lot of recognition to Rutherford County, and we like to recognize Beatty Farms, and Brandon, and Catherine Witt, for this outstanding honor from this commission, and keeping agriculture alive in Rutherford County.
Absolutely. Great news, sir.
Thank you, Pettis, for that update. Anything else?
No, sir.
We're drawing. Thank you.